13:9 AM, Statesboro City Council Meeting. I would like to invite Councilman Travis Chance, please, to give our invitation and pledge this moment.
If you will, let's pray. Lord have my Father, please bless this community, please bless our council, please bless those protecting us home and abroad. Lord, please help us make the decisions today that would be in line with your wishes and please watch over everybody. Amen. Thank you so much.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I would just like to say that I don't know how many of y'all read the paper or yesterday or another that the Supreme Court said that yes, we can have an invitation before our meeting. So, that was good news. Agenda item three is recognition and public presentations. And before we get to items A and B, I would like Steve Hotchkiss with our Gas Department, Natural Gas Department Director, please stand up and come forward. This isn't on the agenda, and I'm not going to embarrass him. At the Municipal Gas Authority meeting this past 13:00, is that right, Steve? Steve was given the Gail Percy Award, which is given every year just to one individual as a distinguished service award for those who work in the natural gas business here in the state of Georgia for municipalities. I would encourage everybody to give Steve a hand for all the homework he's done.
Thank you. I appreciate very much that you had some bold work given to me, but I've got to follow the people who have worked for me all these years. I appreciate them.
And we all appreciate you. Thank you.
The Gail Percy Award.
He wasn't dancing.
I'd say, isn't that, are you sure? It's really close. We have a dance studio with a really similar name, Steve.
Well, it's actually Philly.
Okay, that's right. All right.
Strike that for the record. No, I'm just kidding. Recognition, A. We want to recognize the Finance Department for receiving the Distinguished Budget Award for fiscal year 2014. And I'm going to turn to our city manager Frank Parker, who's far more knowledgeable of these matters, and hand him the award and let him explain the significance of this.
Thank you.
In only ways of time.
Got copy of it.
Only ways of time.
Yes. Is this in here? Or is it here? Do you have it? It's quite hidden. So, we've got the, here in Prestes, it weighs about 20 pounds. Of course, any award is, what the Prestes says, is sort of given to the department as it takes a, basically. Mayor, Congressman, Tom, President Parker, to lend such an award. And of course, the, the market can send you west, and I'm going to let you tell them all the hard work that you've put into this award. This is the...
It's the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States of Canada Distinguished Budget Award. This is the 10th straight year that we're seeing it. We're one of 45 cities, counties, school districts, or authorities in Georgia that receive the award.
And with that, I'd like to ask everyone to give this department a flag of the award.
Okay, next, I'd like to invite the Director of Development and State's Borough Development Authority, Mr. Alan Mulholland. Would like to make an announcement for us, please. Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure that the invitation was extended to the council mayor, the park head, and actually anybody in this room. We're having a workshop on redevelopment powers law. It's a tool that we're looking at to help us in redeveloping the economic presence of lighted areas for redevelopment. It's just an educational and formal. We'll be meeting at the hall, which is right behind 40 East Grill. It's out there right here. And we kind of a dust tree. We'll sit down and lay the advisories. We've done a lot of these throughout the state. It's a very common tool that's been a lot of community confusion. And we have taken us and approached some how to go forward with this. And just wanted to thank you for that.
Absolutely. Thank you. And that is just for clarification. And that's exactly, that's right after the work session on the alcohol ordinance.
Yeah.
Okay. Agenda item four is public comments. Let's see, do we have, we're going to save it to the, okay, I got you. All right, agenda item five, consideration of a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll give Councilman Chance a look over that in a minute or so, and then see if we can get a motion to do that.
Approve, approve.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda item six is public hearing regarding the 2014 update to the City of Statesboro Comprehensive Master Plan. I'll turn to our Director of Planning and Development.
Thank you, Mayor. This is really just an information piece for both the related specialists and the general public to know that the last comprehensive plan that the city adopted was in 2009. We're assuming that the Georgia planning rules, we are obligated to perform a five-year update. We're offered to doing that now. It really is an update. It is not an overhaul of the comprehensive plan. A good example, we updated here the five-year work program embedded into the plan that five years culminate this year. So, we're reporting our work accomplishments on where we are with those programs that were listed in that, developing a new five-year work plan, things of that nature. We are working very closely with the Hets Regional Commission on this to make sure that technically they're reading our rules. There are new rules that have been adopted effective January 4th of this year on how the update has to be put together and submitted to the CRC and VCA. As we are completing a chapter or so of the update, we are submitting those for technical review and CRC. Once we are comfortable that we are technically needing rules, we'll bring those to you into the public information from the CDC. If anyone has any comments that they want to make, please share those with me. Look, this is an update, not a overhaul of the comprehensive plan that we have. So, please share any thoughts or suggestions you may have, and get back to you as we make real progress to put them out in the online.
So, did I, sorry, is there going to be a public hearing regarding the update? Is that correct? And when, what is the proposed schedule for that?
The proposed schedule will be in June. We have a set deadline for the second council meeting in June will be the public hearing on that, which will be the completed update that has received a technical review on the, the public plan.
And will that be posted on the website at some point, Manny?
Yes, ma'am.
And so you'll do that prior to the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions, Congress? Okay. We move to agenda item seven, which is a consideration of a motion to approve the salary increase from step A to step C for three certified wastewater operators. Did you want to speak to that, Jeff? Do we have him?
Wayne, I'm sorry. Wayne is on speaking. And it's also modification of that.
Okay.
That's awesome.
Thank you, Mayor. Wayne, I'm the Director of Water and Wastewater City of Statesboro. We've got three wastewater system operators and one water sewer operator with a payment requiring certifications. The operator positions are hired in at step A in the appropriate grade. They have one year by law to obtain the required certification, either in water, sewer, or wastewater. And at that point, we normally take them to the step C. In the past, when we were following the tape plan, at six months, they would go to a B and then obtain their certification and go to a C. So, what I'm asking now is if we approve these four operators, three wastewater and one water sewer, to go from step A to step C. That way, as we hire new trainee operators in, if I'm being hired in the same thing, the certified operators, I consider pretty good.
It was my understanding after talking to, one of the things, one of the reasons why we're doing this is because, I guess somehow we gave Frank the ability to give someone a step.
That's correct.
Right. So, because someone went in as an A and then obtained the training, they deserve the C. Well, Frank can actually hire someone and actually bump them up to that if they already had that training. So, it's kind of like we're punishing a guy for getting his training while they're working with us.
Right.
So, it just seems to me to make sense, a very easy way of getting the planes go back a little more level. Not quite where we want it to be yet because it's still a person's one year and three years, and they're getting paid the same. But at least it's putting them on the same level of what Frank's authority can give them a step, so.
That's correct.
Do I have a motion to approve salary increase as stated by Johnson? Mayor, I make that motion to approve the salary increase from a step A to a step C.
One second.
Then that is for the four operators that were mentioned, not the three that are in the...
The four that were mentioned, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do I have a second again?
I do, yes.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We move to agenda item eight, which is a motion to consider request by Armstrong Development, requesting that the mayor submit application on behalf of the City of Statesboro to the George Department of Transportation for a median cut in the Veterans Memorial Parkway between Jones Hill Road and Highway 80 Northside Drive. There's actually a laundry list involved in this particular development, so, Robert, did you want to address it, or Manny, did you want to address it as we discuss this item?
I think it may be easier if Chuck can, Chuck Perry can put everything up on the screen and start it.
Okay.
Technical side, if that's all right.
That will be fine. Come on up, Mr. Fair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Absolutely.
Captain. I'm sure I want to start with, and then, I've got a couple questions. I have a little bit of the developer, Armstrong Development, his name's Eddie Clark, and Alex, SEI engineer, I'm not familiar with his last name. Consider answering. The fact of what Robert had alluded to, we're going to ask for the City of Statesboro to make application to provide a full cut median access on bypass and a secondary city street and also the intersection improvements at Northside Drive. But before I begin that, I want, I brought my NC time machine with me. And we're going to go back in time, like Travis was, September 8, 1993. Let me tell them where it was at. This is the property that we're talking about. This is the land tract. This is the bypass. And this is Northside Drive. You'll see some lines here representing city streets, but this is 1993, those do not exist. This is Lester River. Is that right? No, that's not Lester River. That's a lot of land, a lot. What we have for commercial development in this commercial retail is the mall, and we have the Walmart. Buckhead's not there, and they are farming loads, they are farming Statesboro Crossing, they're farming the brand of this property. This is 1993. The bypass is new and special. By 1999, we have loads that want to be off the boats of this intersection. We have the mall. We still have no Brandon Street extension. And Robert will tell you that the reason Brandon Street extension was constructed with taxpayer dollars was because of limiting the traffic at this intersection. Okay? Still, there, we have some infill. We have some infill along Northside Drive, but still not that much commercial development going on in this commercial development. Okay? That's for 2005. We, the city, built Brandon Street all the way to the bypass. We realigned the end of Brandon Street to be able to go across the bypass and continue on out to Kwanah Road. If you look back at the land tract and this other commercially zone, commercial retail property, nothing's happened. It's looking the same way it did ten years ago as well. We have connectivity between Brandon Street and Northside Drive with Buckhead Road. We have connectivity for the Walmart. They extend it out to the newly constructed Brandon Road, and we have connectivity from the mall behind the shopping center, two branches. Everybody has connectivity. Connectivity leads to traffic, traffic leads to business. It's just the way it happens. Okay? Go to 2006. More commercial infill along Buckhead. Also got connectivity. Yeah. Connect it here, and then you connect it to Northside Drive. Two thousand and seven, more commercial though. We've got retail, building retail here. We've got, we've got the banks clearing rent. We've got frank and toilet. We've got more infill along the Buckhead connector. Nothing has happened yet. Two thousand and nine, we've got Statesboro Crossing, we changed that. We had the intersection of Brandon Street connector and that. Going back in time a little, one technology. Two thousand and ten, more infill. By 2013, we've got a tractor bearing on Statesboro. We've got an Olive Garden. We've got banks. We've got a vague Nissan, all because of that construction. If it wasn't there, it'd still be four banks. These are the businesses that came to town or located along this corridor because the city built the road for to alleviate the traffic in Northside Drive. Now, we have development. We have an eager seller for good land property and an eager buyer who'd be Armstrong Development. But we've got an infrastructure problem. Because if you look at the land property in 2014, well, it's exactly the same way it did in 1993. And there's very specific reasons why that. In order for this development to occur, we're talking about 130,000 square feet of new retail space, the developer has to have access to the bypass. Cannot put all of that traffic on Northside Drive. The developer's, or the land's property does not go all the way to Jones Hill Road. However, in the future, it will, and I'll show you that in a second. Specifically, what we're asking for today is the city's support on making applications to the Georgia Department of Transportation for this city street, it will be constructed in accordance with city's construction standards and specifications, this city street and this intersection of Northside Drive, will this city street. What that will do is not only infill this commercially zone property, but also provide access for the development of the remainder of that commercial property. And fully, essentially what we're asking for is what I just said, that the city will make those applications, the developer will facilitate paperwork, all the time done. But until, but before this project can move forward, as you all know, the bypass is a limited access. The roadway is only operated by George Parker Transportation. We met with George Parker Transportation, and the answer was that if he was in Statesboro to make the application, there's a good chance of that. George Parker Transportation came to the planning meeting that we had here at the city, and I think the city heard pretty much the same. So, that is, that is essentially my presentation. I know there's probably a lot of questions about the concept and the economics involved and the developer's spend of defense. He has not expended a vast amount of resources because this is step one. If we do not get access to bypasses, there's a lot of problems in this.
Chuck, can you back up the map?
Yes.
So, ultimately, you would need just one median cut?
One median cut.
That's what I'm asking, just one.
And if the location of that is essentially the same as this, this street, Northside Drive intersection, or Northside Drive intersection over Brandon, essentially the same space. The developer asked for right-in, right-out.
That's what I was asking.
To facilitate access, but it's not a median opening, and it's a very small inhibitor of traffic.
So, there looks like ultimately there'd be two right-in, right-outs?
The developer's going to ask for another right-in, right-out further than, how can that enter into the grocery stores, parking area.
Okay.
And all of that will have to be coordinated with George Parker Transportation if it was two out there.
So, without median cuts, it's not a project, is what you're saying?
That's, that's what the developer's telling us. And that median could actually provide access to the remainder of the land property on the other side of the bypass. And you can, it's very difficult to see, but you can see the GDOT dividing it with the corporate access, where they do have access on the other side of that, and this is the central lineup with that access also. The reason that we're asking for the city to participate in this intersection and Northside Drive and Highway 80 is due to the fact that, number one, this will be a city street. Northside Drive is a city road, and it's a, the GDOT maintains as far as the approach. But also, the property on the Walmart side of the road is owned by Walmart, which is the driver. And as apparently it's a single-eyes intersection, there would have to be some alignment of the lanes and so forth on the other side, which we think the GDOT would require them. And that's the reason that we're asking for the city's participation, and that also due to the fact of that it's a former, and they don't have them.
So, today, we're just asking to submit the median cut. We're not asking insofar as any participation where the traffic line is on, Northside?
No.
Okay. I mean, insofar as what would have to be done there?
Well, we have, we have provided engineering, we're finding, regarding the geometry on the intersections in the land. And if it near comes, it's a financial, so it can possibly be constructed as a matter of a, we don't know. Like I said, we're not prepared to discuss economics or where trees are planted or that kind of stuff. Today, we want to, we want to show you what the economic impact as far as commercial retail business could be to the city, and we want to get the mayor and Congress to do this, do this, but they would sign these applications once they're filled out.
Is there any real cost to the city to make this application?
No.
And if that property develops commercially, eventually, we're going to need it?
Correct.
Okay. Motion to approve?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number nine.
Other statements?
Item number nine is a request and consideration for a motion in support of city... Is there a question?
I have a question.
Yeah.
The staff are making some recommendations. We've got some developers, the class that was presented to the council, we had a new argument for recommendations to be approved, and we put those in our packets. My question is, was the motion with the condition of the ballot to be an application for our best?
Well, the motion was made without the conditions going forward.
Well, this one, we're just making an application for the cuts in Veterans Memorial Parkway.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Does the city need any stipulations for that? I mean, we're just making an application to GDOT. Is there any other reason? Am I missing something? I mean, I know there are some other stipulations, but I think those are related to the intersection of Northside Drive and donating the streets to the city, but none of that was discussed here. This was just the cut for, and the mayor's going to sign something because the city has to do it, not the developer, yes?
That's correct. So, stipulations can be brought in another time.
Okay.
That's right.
That's correct.
Okay.
Don't forget what those are, Manny. Bring them up here, please.
Go ahead, jump in. Don't knock that copyright roll.
No, we will get to the stipulations. I don't see this point. We'll bring those back up in a minute. All right, item number nine is request and consideration for motion in support of the City of Statesboro seeking a signal and encouchment permit from the Georgia Department of Transportation for installation at Franklin Avenue and Cherry Road, and authorization for the mayor to execute a reimbursement agreement in an amount not to exceed $110,000, the cost of said signal design and construction. This is regarding... This is regarding a development that's being proposed in the market district. The developers have requested that we enter into an agreement to reimburse them for the light. It's something that they would like to have done in conjunction with the construction of the development, not to wait until necessarily a couple of years down the road. So I'm gonna defer our turn to our city engineer, Robert Cheshire, to kind of to introduce this particular item and then we'll let the developer speak regarding what they requested.
This particular signal, Branson Avenue, State Route 67, which is, 67, of course, is maintained and owned by Georgia Department of Transportation. We've looked at this signal or this location twice in the past to see if it was warranted the last year, a few years ago, and it was close at the time to being warranted. So we put it into our six-year CIP. Our department put it in for FY 2016, a little over a year from now, and we put, we had no, we hadn't done any design on it or we hadn't at the time when we put it in our CIP or capital improvement program. And we estimated, but we did do an estimate so we could, for budgetary reasons, $110,000. Now, that was based on our experience with some other signals similar that had been installed in the city, of course, until Department of Transportation reviews us to a firm set of plans to say that, yes, if you build it like that, we'll approve it. So we were working off some, really just some, some what I think are strong assumptions anyway, some good experience. Since that time, we'll put it in our budget, we have met with the developer and their engineers and their engineers provided us with a study which confirmed, again, we reviewed it, tweaked a few things, and it shows that the signal is in fact warranted now with the existing traffic and with the predicted traffic, if this development goes forward, would be warranted under two. There's several warrants for a signal that will go potentially under two warrants. They, we met with the GDOT along with their engineer and I think the GDOT is in agreement, at least with the concept that we all discussed. So from that meeting, the developer's engineers again met with a traffic signaling installer who we're very familiar with and has installed several in town and that's, there's some difference in what the, what they're estimating the signal costs at $142,340, I think, $142,340. It doesn't surprise me. I would like to think that's a little bit on the conservative side, but it's probably in the ballpark. If we had sat down and done a, done a full design on it, it's probably somewhere between the $110,000 and the $142,000, $142,000 will be my take on it. So in, I guess, summary, we agree that a signal is warranted at this intersection. Preliminary review would be that GDOT also agrees that it's warranted. I can't speak for them and I don't have anything in writing from them, so I don't wanna speak for them. And I would agree that the, the estimate's somewhere between $110,000 and $142,000 to have a signal installed there.
So, so to be clear, at this point, we're fairly certain, even though we have not had actual official, it hasn't been sent back officially from the Department of Transportation, that it is warranted for one reason, which is the traffic.
Correct.
And in the event the development were to be built, it would meet the warrant for what would be the second warranted it would meet?
It would be the turn movement warrant, which is the second. There's nine typical warrants. One is significant enough to potentially put a signal there. There's some warrants that are more critical than others.
Which is?
Accidents, for example. Accidents would typically prove the priority, which be the priority of, that's what happened at the other end of Branson Avenue, the bypass that one was warranted.
Have a significant number of accidents to meet that criteria?
At this, this end, no, not.
With my current criteria then, that we read, just simple traffic flow on Fair Road?
Four-hour check warrant.
On Fair Road or in the Branson, in and out?
Well, the warrant takes into account, uh, that the terms on Branson Avenue, on Fair Road, the grant, the article on Fair Road. So a four-hour warranty currently means, and if, with opposing of them, it would also mean eight hours on that warrant.
Now, what's the increase in volume projected from before the development and after the development, do they travel to that or are they just doing existing traffic?
Councilwoman, I was gonna say, could you identify yourself for us?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Brad, you'll, you share a form?
Okay. So, Chuck, now?
College kid, he says up.
Just wanted to make sure you're not a plant.
No, the traffic study is included in the account, whatever, existing traffic parts. It currently needs one of the warrants, which is four hours. So maybe in the protected traffic, the building is not used, an additional warrant, which is eight hours of traffic.
And also, would that then meet the turn movement warrant? Is that what you're saying as well?
Right, well, both warrants come into account. They're mainly looking at the number of people coming out of Branson Avenue and the terms. That's the, that's the side of the bargain.
I guess what I was looking for was a, what do we, how many turns we got now? What's the projected number, so we can look at numbers? You don't have to have it.
I do have a warrant.
I mean, more, more?
They're saying they need it now and this is gonna be.
Or more.
I did have a question there, I guess for the, for Robert, or for our college kid. The, you know, item number eight, we just went through a request by a developer to say, yes, go forward or something, and we're gonna pay for it. And then item number nine is, is kind of just the opposite. We want you to help pay for this. Who wants you to pay for it? We don't need any money, but we'll let you, we want you to pay for it. So I guess for, for everybody behind you and then the guys are up here, there. Why, what's the difference? Why is one of them we're paying for and one of them we're granting to them?
Well, I hear what you're saying, but I think we need some clarification as to exactly, because I don't know that everybody out there knows exactly what you're talking about. But there is a list of criteria, which we did not get into today for the other development, which Mr. Perry came up and shared with us that we approved the median cut for. And one of the criteria, and I don't have it right in front of me, y'all have a list of criteria for the, for the other development? I've got it. Thank you. But one of, one of the things on the list was that our planning department recommended, just so, you know, everybody understands what we're talking about, was a developer's commitment to escrow a pro-rata share of the cost of a traffic signal to be installed at the bypass at such time as warranted. In addition to another longer list that has to do with infrastructure of the actual property for number eight. So I guess what Council agreed to say is why have one developer have to pay for the light and not have another developer have to pay for the light? Would that be?
Right, and, and we have, we have that information, but I think the average person reads this and they see the paper and they read it and they go, I don't understand, you know, why, why is Chuck's group getting a yes or no, Doug and Burns and the adults are good enough? There you go, paper. So I guess that's kind of a, kind of a way to explain it more publicly than I think.
That's a, that's a pretty public way of explaining it. So, so I, you know, I hear, I hear what you're saying. I think this would be a good time, if Council agrees, to let the developer come up and speak about the project itself and their feelings on it and why they're asking for the city to, to pay for the light. Would that be fair? Do y'all agree with that? Okay. Come on up.
My name's Bill Langton, I represent the property union here. As the staff has related, you have four requests to the market district, developer and the HUD department, which is gonna be the purchase of the property for execution of reimbursement agreement for the cost of installing traffic signal as described. Estimated cost of signal is $142,430, Robert mentioned. HUD has agreed to pay for the traffic study, which is already grounded, and the engineering costs associated with the signal, which is approximately $19,000 at this point. HUD, as you, as the description is, also is willing to pay for the median installation of the light, is asking the city to reimburse them in the strategic year 2016, which is the year that it's already included in the schedule. Market District was formed 12 years ago by local citizens to develop a 85-inch track duration to the east 20° in the middle of the city. The development is based on a master plan required by the city of Statesboro, a master plan to allow the traffic light. If it had, then it would be included in the cost and in this property sale classes. Since then, the city, the developers have spent over $1 billion in acquiring infrastructure, which we consider our scheme of the game. Building quality and development is controlled by an architect for U-Committee with restricted covenants, resulting in an attractive coordinated project, property value of the land has increased from $5 million 12 years ago to $47 million today. We were told to build out the approaching $80 million. And here's a copy of the proposed building, it's on the stage. One of the things Architect for U-Committee bid was requesting changes in the building to be more attractive in line with the existing buildings and those were approved, as they approved to say. Today, the development includes retail, residential, medical offices, food, beverage, professional offices, pharmacy and lighting. Now, we're seeking to have a nationally recognized grocery store, fuel service and proposed out parks and other facilities, $40 million. The grocery store alone is about $85 to $95, new jobs and benefits. The city DOT traffic study that you just heard about shows that the traffic signal is currently warranted with today's traffic, you estimate that this development increased traffic by about $4,000 per day. In March of this year, the City of Statesboro funded and was presented a retail recruitment strategic plan by the Retail Strategies team. The plan identified a gap of unprophyllic potential for additional grocery sales in the area of $56 to $8 million, depending on the radius that you select. This development is expected to generate $15 million in grocery sales and a play of rooms, $40 to $65 million additional sales for the near future launch. Besides enhanced shopping experience for citizens, especially around the surrounding area, the city benefits to the city include architecture, new sales back revenue, water gas and waste fees and construction impact fees and a $40 million dollar grant. To this, we expect you to request that the city execute the agreement for the purpose. And have someone here from the Hudson Company have questions as well.
Did Representative from the Hudson Company wanna come up and speak?
Assistant Mayor. My name's Brad Holmes, I'm the Director of Real Estate with the Hudson Company in Chattanooga, Tennessee. I'm here today representing the Hudson Company as a developer of approximately nine acres within the market district here in Statesboro. Our particular property includes a proposed 41,000 square foot grocery store with fuel center and an adjacent retail center across on $15,000 square feet. To help locate the property, our development is behind McDonald's on Fair Road, south of Branson Avenue. It's part of our site investigation and due diligence that we typically perform before committing to a project. Traffic and access to the site is one of the key sections on our checklist. In that investigation over the past several months, we have prepared a survey and a traffic impact study at the intersection of Fair Road and Branson Avenue, based on a view of data collected on March 13th. This report, which has been distributed to the city as well as to the Georgia Department of Transportation, indicates a level of service for the subject intersection. This level of service is essentially a grading system that was developed to help to convey operational performance to non-transportation professionals. It simply assigns a grade from ADAP, ABD, FES. This particular report broke the grading down into AM, PM and midday peak times of the day. Our report gave the following conclusions. The AM peak time was given a D, PM peak time was given an A, and the midday peak time came back as an A as well. In the industry, we consider this a failing intersection. And this, I might add, is under the current conditions, before we even add our project or any other development occurs in the area. In our discussions with the city, we since learned that the signalization is currently within the City of Statesboro Capital Improvement Program, which further defined as ENG 36, budgeted for this from 2016. So there has been some forward thinking to improving this intersection for safety and traffic flow in the area. As I mentioned earlier, we have submitted a traffic impact study to DOT, Georgia Department of Transportation, for their review and comment. In a meeting with GDOT and your engineering department a couple of weeks ago, it was stated that this traffic signal is warranted at this intersection. Certainly, the award is subject to final design, coordination with the city and ultimately permit. In order for us to proceed with the project, the development of the grocery store and the adjacent retail, it is critical that this traffic light be installed and be fully operational before our opening, which is currently scheduled for late January. Clearly, there is a mutual desire to have this intersection signaled, issued for us his timing and as well how to fund it. We, as a developer of the project, are proposing to front the cost of the signal in order to meet our timeframe and to enter into a reimbursement agreement with the city to be reimbursed in New York fiscal 2016. I should also add that part of this reimbursement agreement, we are only asking to be reimbursed for the actual cost of the signal, labor and material and equipment. We are not asking to be reimbursed for the upfront design costs. The impact study and survey, which have already been completed, collectively, these upfront costs exceed $19,000. We will be coordinating the design of the signal with your engineering department and with the Department of Transportation to get a final set of plans. Once those are completed, we will go through a typical bid process and obtain multiple bids from multiple contractors that have done similar projects in the area. We will presenting, we will be presenting and reviewing the bids with your engineering department as well as coordinating the project through completion and implementation of the signal. Based on the current design, the direction from DOT and your engineering department, we obtained an estimate of $142,000 on that signal, somewhat seasoned in this industry. Until we complete a full design of the signal, we will not know the actual cost. At this point, in the interest of timing and safety, we have proposed not to exceed of $142,000 in our agreement. We will take full ownership of any cost over and above this $142,000 and will also provide the city the full benefit, the cost savings below that. If the bid comes back at $120,000, for example, this is all that we'd be looking to be reimbursed for. Another key component of the proposed agreement is the fact that we're not, not looking to be compensated for our cost of funds. We will not seek any interest payments on our upfront investment, that is a real cost. In addition, we will be handling all phases of the project, which will allow your engineering department to focus their attention on other ongoing important projects within the city. As I mentioned, we are proposing a 41,000 square foot grocery store with some additional retail. Our total investment in this development will be in excess of $14 million. We anticipate creating over 200 construction jobs during the development phase, as well as between 140 and 160 permanent jobs once the grocery store and the adjacent retailer open. There will be significant sales tax generated out of this development. We estimated retail sales from this project would be about $13 million in the store alone. As stated in the recent report by Retail Strategies prepared for the City of Statesboro in March of this year, there is a need for an additional grocery store in this market. My client has come to the same conclusion and would guard, has a desire to open a store at this location. However, the site must be right and it must meet certain strict requirements. After many months of work by our development team, our consultants, our engineers and our architects, as well as the many hours of effort by your team here at the city, the traffic signal in this intersection has become a critical component to our success. We have identified the need through the impact study and believe there is a desire from all parties to make this a safer and more inclusive intersection. Our proposal for you today allows all of us to achieve our goals and mutually benefit from this signalized intersection. I appreciate your time and I would appreciate your support in this proposal.
Councilwoman Barrett, did you want to go back and address your question?
Sure. I guess the, kind of the question is, from an engineering standpoint, from a budgetary standpoint, kind of what's the difference? And easily, what's the difference between the two projects? Or, or any project that, we're improving infrastructure, why does one person ever pay rent for the grocery, why does one not?
Yeah, I think there's a real clear difference, at least to me, on this one, and that's the fact.
the fact that this one has been understudied now for several years, and is really close to that threshold, and it's all public roads, and I'm not saying public traffic, but it's public streets that come to that intersection. And so, the fact that it's been on the radar, and it's been in our CIP now for a couple of years, and working towards that year that we finally would install it ourselves at completely a taxpayer expense, that's the one at Branton and sixty-seven. The other one is completely new and completely, to me, developer-generated, starts the cut at the bypass, should a signal ever be warranted there. And there are some signals that have been installed, for example, the signal at eighty at the Walmart Drive was installed, completely at Walmart's expense, and the one at Bermuda Run sixty-seven was installed, completely at the hospital's expense. So that's been passed signals where a major development first going in may cross that threshold, we didn't have it on the radar, and so they paid for it.
If I could, in the last two weeks, in regard to this, basically, I've done, personally, I've done a traffic study, I've been there twelve times, basically, from eight morning until six in the afternoon, and I actually said at an intersection, just with the traffic volume it has now, this one started crazy, it's not safe to take a left, come out of Branton, back for one of those cars, I could not, I had to take a right, I did a U-turn, which is not legal. But I actually did it in a legal way, I went and turned into the fire department, and came out of the fire department.
No, you didn't, Frank. You went to McDonald's, you went to the drive thru, came around that way, don't act like you went to the fire.
No, I did not. I actually turned into the, turned into the station for fire department, stationed there. But it is a dangerous intersection as it stands right now. With this project, it will not be possible to take a left at the intersection without the traffic signal. Like I said, I've been, in the last two weeks, I've been there twelve times, and it is warranted at this point in time during this traffic.
So I want to, I want to clarify what you said, Robert, just to be sure. What I heard you say was, in the past, when developers had paid for a light to be put in, it was because their development generated the problem. Whereas in this case, you feel that the problem is already there, and the development will simply aggravate it. Is that, is that a fair synopsis of what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Cheshire, how many, how much do we have set aside in two twenty sixteen for this? Do we have one hundred and forty-two? We had a hundred and ten thousand, a hundred and ten in our estimate. And you think of this estimate, that they bring to us, one hundred and forty-two, four thirty? I'd like to think at the tad on the high side, that there might be some contingency in there. Bass Signal, who put that together, is, they did our last signal, and I'm very comfortable, I've been working with them for twenty years, and no reason to feel like there, it's not a good estimate, but really don't know until you put the bids out, until what that final number is going to be. So, it's a great question, and I don't know that I have a good answer for it.
That's as, that's as good as it can get.
I guess I have another question also, and anyone, I think, could throw at me if I'm wrong. So, the property's on from five million to forty-seven million, which is forty-nine thousand a year in taxes, for the county, property taxes. It's a four hundred and sixty-five thousand being a little bit, for the county. And for four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, what did county do last year in that property? It's probably going to remain quiet for a while, but we can think.
So you're, you're asking, what was the county's participation in doing anything with the market district last year?
For half a million dollars in tax revenue per year, and it's only going to go up, you're saying the cost could get doubled to eighty million? Well, what, what's their, you know, we talk, we use the term then to go stand in the game. They, they got a, hanging down the game? All right, just checking. That's kind of what I thought the answer was, I'm just kind of wondering, at that point, we can't fix it today. But this is, I mean, I think this is a question that's kind of, you know, buyer trades to drive, it's money you're not, maybe doing. But we're asking for a hundred and ten thousand dollars, which is only twenty-five percent of what they'll take in next year. Not counting the rest, so I just, I think that's a, that's a relationship that's not ever.
Did you guys ask the count? Kind of rhetorical.
Councilman, we have that again in the past, I've been there. But you always say, you didn't want to, you like, you said. I feel you already have something that maybe you guys should get a little bit.
Councilman, where that station needs to be addressed, the traffic strategy and they have some consideration of entertaining that with discussion with council.
I do like the way you did that, though.
I didn't get your answer.
I know, I know it was coming, I just didn't know when or where, so. And it keeps everybody on their toes during these meetings, what are we going to have? What's the county doing for us lately?
That doesn't include the fifty percent of the sales tax that they get for their SLOSS project.
That is correct. So the question remains before us. There's a couple, well, there's a couple issues here. What about the actual number that's being discussed? One forty-two versus one ten?
One forty-two, what does one forty-two include? Is that rolling in the traffic study? Is that rolling in the cost of the engineering, or is that, is their offering?
They agreed to pay for the survey, which is already done, traffic study, which is already done.
Which is standard by GDOT, though, typically, yes?
Yes, and, but they're doing the, the design as well, which we, which we would have done in-house, had we done it a year and a half from now, we probably would have done it in-house, so the expedited, that needed to go ahead and have an engineer consultant do that, and they've already, they're working on that now. But they've agreed to pay for that installation is what we would reimburse in this two years, I guess.
I realize there's a little bit more traffic here on Fair Road than on Branton, but when, when that new intersection was put in there at Branton, right there, across from, right by that new car wash there on the backside of Walmart? And I realize that Walmart was the primary reason why you had to put that light in there, but did they share in the cost of the installation?
They did, they paid a third.
They paid, why, how did you come up with a third?
Because on the other side, Bayside Nissan built the road, took the, you know, public road on its side, they paid that, and we went to Walmart and asked them for a third, and they, they paid it.
So who paid what? Be clear, Paul, on that, Robert.
We paid, that one turned out to be about seventy-five thousand, eighty thousand. That signal was about eighty thousand. They ended up paying around twenty-seven thousand, if I recall.
Walmart did?
They did.
And they didn't pay for the road on the other side?
Freely in the road on the other side, in alignment, and then we paid that one.
And when Walmart, and Walmart paid on the other side for the, and Walmart paid on the other side for the north side drive light as well?
They paid that one completely.
They paid that one completely.
But they paid for that one, they built it, so.
No, it came later, wait.
Anybody want to run over to County Commission meeting and ask for a third?
There's one, there's a meeting later tonight.
Yeah, I was about to say, going away.
We definitely should ask. And if they can say no, and if they say no, then let's report no. You know, that four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar payment is not important.
Al, we may need you to go to that meeting with us to make sure.
Well, we can certainly ask.
How do we proceed now? Do we need to go ahead and say that we'll, we'll reimburse, and then ask county for a third?
You're not, you're not going to get an answer.
No, no.
But we can certainly ask.
So do we have any other questions?
Well, I guess one question, since, since we're talking about it, before, we've got written on our piece of paper here, one hundred and ten thousand dollars, we're talking one hundred and forty-two. If we were to, the council were to agree to this amount, and we're agreeing that there's thirty-two thousand dollars out there, so I guess the question's going to be, if we were to, we were to agree to that, what happens to the thirty-two?
I have a question for the cost of the light, one forty-two.
Right.
Because I was just, best information we had at the time of the year.
So how, how did the one ten go in there?
The one ten is what some of the CIP paid.
And it was, ended at what, year and a half ago, not this current, but that was an estimate we gave it up on time. But it's not one to forty-two, it's not to see, because this project will come in below that. What's, what's his bid?
The question's not to see.
Robert, how, if you had to, you say some things will have been done in-house, of the nineteen thousand dollars that, that developers are currently saying they have in the project, is that a really legit number, do you feel? Yes, they spent nineteen.
Yeah, that's a good number. For the survey, for the survey and traffic study.
We're going to have to, the developers already have one fifty million, another office, which, next we have, so it's going to come in, this is a little, but also it's a contract life, not until we're in a pretty match, or something like that, or some of the year, to include that in the cost of this one.
So I'll ask the elephant in the room a question. In the event the council chose not to pay for the light, would that be a deal breaker for the developer?
It would be.
Okay. So pay for the light its entirety, it would be, whatever the cost that, and, you know, feel free to answer as you see fit.
Yeah, we just, we just want to get reimbursed for the actual cost.
Of the one forty-two, for a third.
Not doing, not doing, yeah, it turned out, then we'll cover it.
Question, Robert, too, the one hundred and ten thousand, if the development included some of the equipment that's now required to the, any?
DOT did ask that we install a radio transmitter in that signal so that it could be connected to the signal bypass and the signal at Bermuda Run, so they would be coordinated, and that's typically five to ten thousand. So, you know, it's a, it's a good point. The problem may not have been in our number initially.
Well, since we have a hundred and ten here, Mark, where are we going to get the other thirty-two?
It's all coming out of our SLOSS dollars, so it would be, the hope that we would be under budget off a couple of other projects between now and then.
Is staff recommendation that we go with one ten, if we can afford that, and we're not, technically, we're not actually writing the check for that until two thousand sixteen, is that correct?
That recommendation is not to see one forty-two.
What they?
It's, the staff recommendation is not to see. That was just because that's what was in our CIP, that's why we showed that figure as far as the other, we have several options, is how, the way they, to secure, paying the other thirty-two thousand dollars, one per million on this project alone will take down.
And whether we installed it now, whether it's installed now, whether we installed it a year and a half from now, the one forty-two could be a very legitimate price. So what we're going to do is work with their engineers and the developer to make sure that price is under one forty-two. We're going to do everything we can to keep that price down, make sure the bid is good and goes after several qualified contractors.
Well, let me ask this, the CIP is kind of a wish list, for lack of a better term, which it'd like to do with the funding in that particular fiscal year. Are you comfortable as a staff paying for the whole thing in two thousand sixteen? Or would you like to see it deferred over two years, three years? I'm just asking, options.
That one likely needs to be addressed by St. West, but I think, I think that's the answer. As far as SLOSS dollars, we're saving by two, by two thousand sixteen.
Would you be more comfortable paying it two?
Always.
Always? That's what, Councilor.
Two would be fine.
Well, if you, if you look at their numbers, thirteen million dollars for the sales revenue, one percent tax for SLOSS is one hundred and thirty thousand a year, we just divide that with county, that's sixty-five grand a year. So, give it to them as it comes in, kind of reimbursing the sales tax.
Does the developer have an issue with that, over a period of time versus in one fiscal year?
Put me on the spot?
Yes.
Pretty much.
That would not be a preference.
Okay.
But would it be a deal breaker? You're going to get it in two years versus one?
I would have to, well, I don't know the answer to that question.
Because you're just losing the cost of funds, costing you some funds for two years. It, you know, and we'd be able to, we're not taking it out of another project, we'd be able to give you the money basically as it comes in, so it'll only almost be like a, the fact of a tax payment, though, it's not a tax payment. We're not allowed to do that.
Is there any way to, to fund the one ten approximately, and then fund the balance in the following year, as opposed to doing now?
I didn't see much problem, I don't see a problem. I had the one ten scheduled, so.
The one ten, twenty-six, thirty-two, and a little eight.
If it comes that, if it comes down to that.
It would not be a preference, again, but.
Do we have any other questions for council?
Should we make a, can we put stipulation that they ask the county for some money?
I was going to say, I would like, I mean, I don't want to put in a motion, because my God, we'll just fight over. But I would like to go to officially ask them, if you don't mind, versus board members. And just say, for five months, for four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, we'd like you guys to help now. This is what we've done for you, and we have a membership of military for it.
So much for city-county relations, okay.
The city guys are a lot of SLOSS dollars, and we're sitting here paying for it.
I understand, and I do hear your concerns, and I share your concerns.
I just don't really have a filter there. I know.
So, is, is the motion going to, to, now, I'm just asking, in, in stating the motion, am I going to put in the motion, would it be your desire to say, contention upon you going to ask the county for?
No. If we have a man who's on board here, he'll ask.
I know, I just, I, I want to be clear. All right, so.
We're putting on the contract, though.
And, and asking for a motion, we're going to say, our motion's going to be that we agreed to pay, reimburse up to one hundred and forty-two, whatever that number is, I'll look exactly at the number, for the cost of the installation of a light, one hundred and ten of that being in fiscal year two thousand sixteen, remainder if necessary, depending on what that above one ten is, not to exceed one forty-two to be paid in fiscal year two thousand seventeen, is that correct?
Correct. Or do you write it up, one ten sixteen, up to thirty-two and seventeen separately? Have you written that differently? It's the same thing, you should know that, or do you?
Do you have a suggestion on the wording? It's a lead part.
Reimbursement for one hundred and ten thousand dollars in fiscal year two thousand sixteen.
Correct.
Motion to reimburse the remainder up to one hundred and forty-two thousand in the following year.
So it will be two separate motions, is that what you're saying?
Or it'll be one motion, the two SLOSS.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion from council to approve the reimbursement to Hudson Development of one hundred and ten thousand dollars in fiscal year two thousand sixteen for the installation of a light at Branton Avenue, an additional thirty-two thousand?
Four thirty.
Four thirty in fiscal year two thousand seventeen, if warranted, if the cost of the light not to exceed that additional amount in two thousand seventeen.
Motion made.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Addendum item number 10 is a consideration of a motion to award an engineering contract to SAP Engineering for the natural gas expansion project to US 301 and I-16.
This is an extension from previously, the council approved the RPU regulation of SAP Engineering for Engineering Services for the Natural Gas, by extension of the 301, I-16. We were approved in a set of negotiated terms, the terms were included in the package. Basically, the project has an estimate of $750,000, 49% of that is $500. Term of contract is 9% of construction cost, which is fairly average for the services of this nature. Of course, the cost of construction goes up or goes down, that final number fluctuates accordingly. And I would, this 9% doesn't include additional services, additional design specifications, adjustment plan, or maintenance, and also system mapping, and a few other services, more than like Steve with additional base services.
There is one additional item that had some cost to engineer, we did ask for some system modeling, see how this new item affects the remainder of the system. So there is an addition, it's not just a straight engineering or this project contract. He is going to do some modeling of the entire connection, the whole system. So there is that at work, and based on that, I think it's something that did.
And we did have, the contract, the contract, we recommend this contract.
Do I have a motion to award an engineering contract to SAP Engineering for the natural gas expansion project at US 301 and I-16?
Certainly. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Darren. Darren ran everybody out of the room.
Good job, Darren. That's two potential grocery stores there, so we might want to send a police officer out to make sure there's no trouble.
Exactly.
My in-house brains that are here is.
Okay, addendum, do we have any other business from city council?
I would very briefly like to say before we get to the very end there, Sophie, what here, kind of a special thanks to Robert and Jason. We had some, I guess, lighting needs, to be correct, in the downtown area, Spahn Avenue, Donahue, Donaldson, Grady College area. And very swiftly, after an email apparently didn't get through, the next email gets through, and it studies, kind of comes out, we need to get.
Any lights in? Seven now?
Seven or eight are in now, and they're still looking, and I would like to let you all know that at 10:15 last night, Jason was driving around in the truck, checking on the lights in those areas. So it's kind of very cool to see your, our city guys out, actually looking at them and doing work that late at night to kind of make sure that what our citizens ask for is in place. So just wanted to thank you all very much. I don't have a flag.
No flag, no flag for motion.
Very good of you.
Do we have any other business from council? Okay, we're going to enter our public comment section, we're going to start with I may, and ask Mr. Thomas Ward with Gateway Development Corporation to come forward, Mr. Ward here. Mr. Ward is here to request a public presentation regarding the proposed Newport Trace Development to be located on Lester Road, and its submission of application to the Georgia Department of Community Affairs for Low-Income Housing Tax Credit and/or Home Investment Partnership Program funding. Good morning, Mr. Ward.
Good morning, thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Thomas Ward, I'm with Gateway Development Corporation. I hope all of y'all have a package that I had sent in earlier. Our company specializes in these type of affordable housing projects. We have semi-complexes in the southeast. And we have family and elderly, we have different projects, and you have, there's one light on the other side of the Lester Road. The law of two ways to last one, that is elderly. This is on Lester Road, there's 5.02 acres there, it's already sunned. It has all utilities on site, it actually has a sewer line running right through the backside of it. It has natural gas, and has the option to. We did have a first step meeting with the city departments. And we approved the procedures, and there was a separate key for market, private department, and that nature, which we will correct. The book we're proposing to be of is 56 units. And of that, we have paid one bedrooms, 32, 36, two bedrooms, 16, three bedrooms. These units will be built over Georgia Affordable Housing program. And this will be built with Earthcraft Community Greenfield, it is a high-energy efficient building code. We will also have the 30-year rent, and have the shields and things that help the maintenance of the project. The rents are affordable, and they are for people in the range of $10 to $15 an hour. Those are your retail workers, of course, this is close to the mall and all the other new facilities that are being proposed as well. We are not asking for any money, all we are doing is asking for your support. If there's any questions, I would love to comment.
When we say support, let me be clear, there, if y'all, in your package, you'll have a letter? I think y'all seen.
No, they came in, they were all swearing out, put it out pretty loud.
Okay.
You talking about the proposed, right?
Well, no, we'll talk about that in a second.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the last page of the thing.
Yeah. And the letter in the last part of the packet is a quest, just to refer to that, and then we'll talk about what came in.
Okay.
This one, Council, right. The, the letter, which we're being asked to endorse, would go to the Housing Finance and Development Division, the Georgia Department of Community Affairs, which would be voted on by council, signed by mayor. It's either opposed, the proposed development is presented, that the development is unopposed, or the proposed development is presented, or that we support it. So that's what we'll be talking about today, at the end of, at the end of our discussion, so. Get that out, and then y'all can take the conversation further.
I got one other question, Manny, does zoning currently there, what's that, is that property zone? Which means it can have, it looks like, unless I put my math wrong, you're 120, 125. Eight, sixty-four, forty-eight, seven hundred and twenty, and that's, that's what it's in. And the height for that is a?
And can you, can you let everyone know exactly where this would be located? So that we have an image as to the, you know, visually exactly where it will be?
I'm sorry, I don't have a map or anything with me, I'm, this is off of Lester Road. It is a property that is zoned appropriately for this particular proposal. As Mr. Ward stated, we met over this project with Mr. Ward and the entire development team during the Right Start process. Ran all the calculations, we looked at density, we looked at utility, ingress, egress, fire, light safety, all the typical things that we reviewed in a Right Start with an I-14. Would we be able to permit this particular project if it asked for one with council or without? And the project as proposed met all the development regulations on file from State Street, or could be easily revised to do so, we don't expect any need for council action. Project fit well within the development regulations from the state.
So, and as to my question, where exactly Lester Road is?
I'm sorry, I don't know exactly where.
Can you tell me?
Yes, Jones Mill Road, it is, we have the, sorry, I put my name like this, Jones Mill Road, Lester Road.
So it's at the corner?
Yes, they're actually.
Not on the corner.
It's right at the back office.
It's to the east, approximately, the corner line is a bike, it is owned for office.
Right, it's.
A little sign that used to say Hollywood Forest or something like that.
Well, it was actually the Forest Project for State Street Hospital.
That's right.
Is what it was, it was for years, okay, just to be clear.
It, it abuts the portion of Valley Road condominiums that is against Lester Road, so it would be right on next to that. So I guess if you're looking at, if you're looking at this particular drawing, the, with Lester Road on the bottom of the left-hand side would be the condominiums. And actually, right across from the entrance to this facility would be Fleming Drive, which is the road that runs right behind High School.
This is in your district, do you want to read the letter?
I mean, do we need to, yeah, we have to read it into, into the record. Says, Dear Mayor, Morning City Council Members, Inglewood Condominium Association opposes the Newport Trace Development Proposal on Lester Road submitted by Mr. Thomas Ward of Gateway Development Corporation as well as its submission of application to the Georgia Department of Community Affairs for low-income housing tax credit and/or home investment partnership program funding. As an association, we feel this type of development would be deterrent to our neighborhood for the following reasons. Gateway Development Corporation is an out-of-town developer. Studies have shown that the low-income housing, subsidized housing developments constructed, excuse me, and managed by non-government entities, especially those from out-of-town developers, have a higher primary, lower property values, and are not aesthetically or functionally maintained. The proposal calls for 54 three-bedroom units on 5.4 acre tract of land. This can only occur by building three or four-story buildings, which would not be in harmony with the existing homes in the area. There is an abundance of already low-income subsidized housing in the area with five developments totaling over 300 units within a half-mile radius of the proposed location. The proposed development would be located across from State Street High School, next to the Heritage Health and Rehabilitation Nursing Home, and Lester Road Condominiums, as well as back up to Willing Way Hospital and Inglewood Condominiums. This area is an established neighborhood comprised of stable, single-family homes and professionals. The proposed housing project would bring an additional transient population to the area. The stigmatism associated with low-income or subsidized housing will hinder home sales in an already unstable housing environment. The proposed development would destroy mature trees and eliminate green spaces which greatly impact the environment by causing additional stormwater runoff and flooding problems. And lastly, the number of units would lead to additional traffic and pedestrian congestion in an area that is already severely congested during school days. The proposed Newport Trace Development is a negative thing for our neighborhood as a whole. For this and other reasons stated above, the Inglewood Condominium Association is requesting the State Street Council vote to reject the request of the Gateway Development Corporation and the proposed Newport Trace Development project.
Would you like to respond to that, Mr. Ward, anything within the line?
Uh, yes, first thing, because I don't believe they have the facts right, I want to find out where they found the property. It's not well anything, anything that is over 20 years. Actually, labor, equipment, city food, we have the floods, the coastal, we're actually, we're separate project there. Being out of town, it's not mean that it is a town, or we will not take our investment to heart. All these other developers are out of town, so your grocery stores aren't, your apartment out of town, or other developers out of town, are they the same? This is America, if you're going to get places, you need to work. If you classify a person or low-income person, it's transient or anything without making it correct. Most probably a third of your city employees would be considered low-income, under the state standard. It would also have most of the regional workers in that same factory. So what they're saying is, it might, it might not be considered.
Is there, is there any kind of study that you're basing the need for low-income housing? What is that study?
We actually have a market study.
And the reason I ask that is because, city of State Street, despite the fact that by the books, our income is low, we do have a lot of college students who are working those retail jobs, who you wouldn't traditionally consider low-income families, and that skews us to the left-hand side. And, you know, creates other problems, such as attracting retail, which is why we did this retail strategy study. So I'm wondering if that has been taken into consideration, because I'll tell you, in my district, we've got a lot of half-empty, low-income housing that has not been well maintained. I can rattle off at least half a dozen or so that are within a couple of golf shots thrown from this very, kind of where this proposed development. My concern is that we build another one of these, we're encroaching on a neighborhood that's struggling to, to make a comeback, you know. Folks are, the houses are turning over, they're starting to be remodeled, new roofs put on, those types of things. And here we have another proposed low-income development, we've already got five, six in that area that are not fully occupied, that are not well maintained. And that is, I think, the concern of many of the constituents in that particular area, and quite frankly, throughout the whole district.
I'm not sure about which ones you're talking about, we actually have a market study that we have incorporated and we have done, that shows that there is a need in the rest of the affordable housing projects that are, that are used by the Georgia CIP, has the occupancy, there's need it. I'm not sure which ones you're talking about, if you were to name those units later, you would be in that way you had right.
Sandy Hill Apartments on East Main, 24th East Apartments, Fox Lake, north, what's the name, North Side, North Lake? Fox Ridge, I'm sorry, Fox Ridge, no offense, guys, sorry.
Yeah, watch out, I'm not going to help you out.
Fox Lake is back there, that's the next one. Fox Ridge, what's the, North Side, unpacking house, you're already starting to see Madison Meadows, which is a fairly brand-new, you know, five, six years old. Landscaping is not being maintained, or it's not being attended to.
I think, I think one of the things you're pointing to, Council Boyum, is that we've, as a, as a city, have struggled with empty housing. And I think as we have had apartment, student housing growth, we've seen apartment complexes that have been left unfilled, which have resulted in degradation of those properties. So, what I'm hearing you say from your district, if you already have housing of this type that is unfilled, and we're going to result not only in perhaps this housing development is built, and perhaps it fails, but is it going to leave unfilled properties continuing to, like I say, degrade in your area, which I consider would be a legitimate concern? I mean, is that what I'm hearing you say?
Yeah, well, absolutely, you know, I think. Counsel, would you like to go on some, say something?
Let me make one comment, yes, now, not speaking of the location, but speaking of the need, the address of State Street Hospital, authorities, survey, has quite a long waiting list of need, and was actually trying to or provide additional, but could not find funding. So, I think the need could be demonstrated, the location could be an issue.
And I'll tell you one of the big concerns I have is, is that in that particular area, the need aside, not that that's not a concern, because I think what you're saying is completely legitimate, is this not in keeping with what's there? A three-story structure next to that neighborhood, next to all the properties that are around it, I mean, that is just simply not in keeping with that neighborhood. I would venture to say that'd be taller than the high school. I don't know that, but I think one of the things we said as a city council, and what we're charged with, is trying to, to assure that the integrity of our city, the integrity of our, our city neighborhoods, which are trying to get folks to move back into and to redevelop, remain so. And so the actual structure itself, albeit it may meet zoning conditions, et cetera, I see it towering over a one-story house next to it. Am I the only one that sees this? Am I the only one that sees this?
That's it, it's fixed. And that was one of the, really, the, the, I guess, a lot of the descriptions on here and kind of getting a, heard the way of crime and all that stuff, someone called me, they didn't address those issues that live in the area. They addressed simply the size of it. They said, you know, we don't, if someone wants to come in and build high-income apartments for college students, we don't want it. We're, we're opposed to it. And here's one, and they said exactly the same thing, Mayor. Driving down the road, you now have trees, you now have two-story things, and it's, it's short two-story, not the two-story that are being proposed by some people where we go all the way up and push them.
Most of it is loft-type space in, in...
So your top, your second floor is actually, I guess, whatever you call that, loft-looking. And so it's not, it's not a full two-story. So they're like, you know, putting something even taller that would hold 120 people, you know, that was their concern, is the way that it looked going down next door to the retirement home, and you go on down, there's the apartments, apartments like called street tags were high, and then you've got the duplexes down the way. So it doesn't really fit, was the, was the way they said it. And they lived nearby, and they were like, you know, traffic-wise, no big deal, the idea for some other things, they weren't really concerned. Every simple concern, the aesthetics, it just didn't concern them.
I mean, I would have to agree.
I think so.
Did anybody from the neighborhood itself, I know, Valerie, you're here, did y'all want to come speak to, I know we've read the letter from the President of the Neighborhood Association, would anybody that's time want to speak regarding this project?
Or at least if there's any, I mean, how many folks here from District One in that neighborhood, maybe stand up or raise your hand if you have, there's a number of people. Anybody on the yeas side of this one? Well, it's pretty clear. Feel free to speak if you may, as it come on up, tell us where you live, what your name is.
My name's Rick Bottoms. I live on my most support. I'm not going to be public speaking, apologize for that. My major concern was the traffic on the road in front of the high school. I believe that increasing the population in that area from such an access to our properties would, oh, there's no traffic light on the other side of Lester Road. So that would happen, something would happen for us there. But then if you do add that traffic light, we're going to end up with a gridlock that's only there. It's our balance of day. I think we'd be total disaster. That's all.
Appreciate that.
I agree with the letter. I am willing to listen to Dylan's arguments. I would love to see a little bit more about some of the properties that his company has put up. One thing I'm worried about is worst-case scenario in this, this development goes up, and despite all the assurances, it goes downhill. What happens then? Essentially, we're stuck with this in the neighborhood, and I know that Councilman Boyham is not going to want to run on the platform of, hey, you knocked down a development where a lot of low-income families live. We're just, we're not in favor of it. It just, it doesn't fit in with the neighborhood. You know, I, I don't think it's that income thing so much as the development. Like Councilman Britt said, we wouldn't be able to have a huge, high-income college apartment complex going up there. So what else?
Thank you, Jack. So at this point, as a council, I would ask, and I don't have to, I want to ask Mr. Lee Carter over here, our attorney, exactly what, how to go forward. We as a council need to decide what our response will be in this letter, if it's asked to be sent to the DCA. As a council, do we oppose? What should, how should the motion sound as it regards our response in this letter?
Well, it's in the public comments section. It's merely Mr. Thomas coming to, and he says, or the, who we met there for an answer issue, city issue or whatever. I don't really see anything to vote on.
Okay.
We just take the side of the bottom. If the mayor's going to send, if the mayor's going to send the letter, I think we appropriate to bring it back to the council, you know, to approve, have action. At this point, that, that's not an important counsel, it's not an immediate. It's simply heard arguments for and against the issue.
Well, if Mr. Ward were going to go forward, then council may want to send, the mayor may want to send a letter saying it was not in favor or it was in favor. So I guess, I guess the tipping point for that would be is to, does Mr. Ward go forward with his plans? And in the event that he does, at that point, we bring the letter to council as to be opposed or unopposed, correct? And that would be driven by, the permitting process driven by what, do you think?
Well, if the council, if you are opposed as a council now, opposed or forward the letter, you could make a motion now to, to, under sort of other business, before councils now come up, that you want to address this topic now. You want to address the topic now. Would you like to bring it anyway?
I don't either.
I think the letter is, is very clear. I mean, there's a, there's a clause that says, in this capacity, and referring to the mayor, in this capacity, I hereby state that the city council of State Row either opposes the proposed development, is unopposed to the proposed development, is presented or supports the proposed development as presented, as evidenced by attachments. I would think at this point, at least from my standpoint and the folks up in my district, and certainly concern over the existing Section 8 housing that we have throughout the city that needs to be improved, including a lot of them up in my district, I would have to move to, if Mayor, if you're going to send this letter, I move that you check opposes the proposed development as presented.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I...
Opposed?
I might add, add something to that on what Mr. Parker said. Some of this housing, we could use more of it, like you said, Mr. Casey, that said, just not dislocating for us.
Okay, under twelve B, under public comments, we're going to move to B, which is Mr. Marshall Ransom would like to present counsel with a petition from the residents of Fox Lake Drive, a question of how much we can actually seize water system. Mr. Ransom?
Thank you. I was asked to bring copies. I don't deny you again. Absolutely. This morning, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm Marshall Ransom, over to 219 Fox Lake Drive. I had an issue addressed by using the petition from the residents of Fox Lake Drive. This is a follow-up to my presentation that the city council made on November 19th, 2013. Petition signed by almost all residents on Fox Lake Drive and I did try, but a couple people never seem to be home. Request that we be connected to the city wastewater sewer system. We who have signed are all willing to pay the additional utility bill for this service, as you can see from the wording in the petition. I'll do my best not to repeat what was said on November 19th. I would, however, like to add some detail that should make it obvious, we think the city has some obligation to help us with this issue. If we at my house first had to leave our home and get a room in a motel in December 2005 because of our septic tank not working, after spending money at the motel and paying to get my septic tank pumped twice, I followed the water. That led to the new middle crossing development parking lot. There was nothing wrong with my septic tank, everything flooding coming from middle crossing. I informed the city engineering department and had much communication with that department for a period of months. Some evidence of that communication was sent to Mr. Jeshi and Mr. Boyham last summer in a letter with enclosures dated July 17th, 2013. The planning for drainage of the middle crossing development does drain on paper. Thus, engineers signed off on the plan. The plan was that water from the parking lot from homes bordering the north side of Fox Lake Drive homes would divert into a ditch that was never dug. Water from the parking lot would miraculously turn left into this non-existent ditch. I called the original drawman of the middle crossing, and he assured me that all would do well, right before he sold out, took his money, and went away. The conversations I had with the city engineers indicated that this ditch needed to be there. But the middle crossing development was approved without any ditch existing. Then houses went up. Subsequent labs were announced to the city engineering department that there was no ditch, and indeed, new homeowners were building fences that would block the path where this ditch was supposed to be. Nothing was done because, as I have found out, the ditch that supposedly drains middle crossing on paper exists, well, actually does not exist, could exist on private property. So the city approved the drainage plan that does not exist and over which it has no authority. No homeowner can be compelled to dig this ditch, and the city cannot dig it because it would be on private property. Fox Lake Drive development was approved in a similar manner well over 20 years ago. There was supposed to be a ditch, and at one time there was a semblance of one behind the houses on the south side of Fox Lake Drive, to be maintained by homeowners. If you take a look at the terrain, see for yourselves, no homeowners with shovels could deal with this. My point is that for over 20 years, septic tanks flooded to the point of being useless on the south side of Fox Lake Drive because of the planning and the Fox Lake development, causing the same problems as we have to deal with on the north side. We ask that the city accept some responsibility for the fact that our septic tanks, which do work, are being flooded because of the plans for these developments approved by the city of State Row. We ask that one symptom of this plan be addressed by connecting our homes to the city wastewater sewer system. And I would add that septic tank problems are the only one symptom of the problems created. I thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to you, and I hope you will consider our petition and the light that I presented. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, that means that, we talked about it all the time before, what is the cost to bring sewer to the, the street? We talked about it one time, a couple different ways. Put it in the entrance, put it down the road, it's the first.
Amazing you're talking about what, to homeowner and to the city.
Not homeowner, I want to put it in front of any one of these houses, run it down the street, or whatever.
Approximately $250,000 to $300,000, and then a letter, $250,000 to tie these existing homes up.
Which would be the property ownership of Fox Lake.
The whole project to connect all the houses, abandoned existing septic tanks, everything is a big somewhere, maybe a $500,000, $500,000.
Well, let's, let's delineate that a little bit. So you're talking $250,000 to $300,000 just to run the lines down the street?
With sewer laying in and stuff, a sewer service to the right of way on each block.
And then, there would be connecting the homes to the sewer and then getting rid of the septic tank?
Right.
When you say get rid of the septic tank, what do you mean?
You have to pump it out and cave it in, fill it with sand, grass over it, clean it up.
That would be a cost to a homeowner of about $10,000 a house, pretty expensive.
So $10,000 a house to run the line and cave in the septic tank, which the homeowner would be responsible for doing.
So currently, if you build a house in State Row, what does it cost you, sewer from the road to the house? What's our, what's the fee?
We don't, the city doesn't do that. Currently, the city does not own or install the ladder line.
What, what does it cost the homeowner?
Our, our cap fee is $600.
Part of that would be how far you got to run?
Yeah.
The line would play into that.
Well, and you know, an empty piece of property is a lot easier to run a pipe in if you haven't digged under a house and connected existing pipes. And then you're talking about, you know, burying the septic tank as well.
Right. Some, some of the, I don't know about Fox Lake, but we're all open to that, you know, septic tank, and then you also have a septic tank that your washing machine goes into. So you have to get away with all of those, you got to tile that plumbing in, and then get it to the city's facility.
Do we have to question, uh, four or five of these, that don't have city source? And some are, they're strictly for give-to-the-...
And we've done the engineering study on this particular one, did we not?
Yes, we have.
So the, so the actual plans are in place?
Plans and facts are in place on F and several others. Just council is not elected to some of them.
This is a perpetual CIP project, isn't it?
Yes.
This is not a current CIP project.
This is a small, we've got some where you're looking at over $6 million.
Over $100,000 perhaps.
As we go in, a lot of these are, are systems that were manic in the city that were all being installed, and then when they're annexed in.
Well, Robert, you, you know, we've had some meetings with the middle crossing homeowners association up there about some of their drainage issues as well. How much of what Mr. Hanson says about the runoff, is it affecting their, is there any way to show that that's been affecting their septic tank? Obviously, anecdotally, since it's been there, it's been causing some septic tank problems, I guess, because the ground is just soft, more water on the ground, and the leaf fields aren't that big. So is there any way to determine how much middle crossing might be that that development may have caused some of the issues?
I suppose we could identify those, and I disagree with Mr. Ransom a little bit. I think, I was not here when all of that development was constructed, that we see evidence that the ditch was there at one point, although it is correct that a, that drainage ditch on private property is not maintained by the city.
With fences running perpendicular to the ditch.
Right. And we've met with the homeowners association, middle crossing, several of the people that constructed the fences in the ditch and been trying to work through that, that issue. But there's no doubt that the fact that the ditch has been, the integrity of the ditch has been compromised, that that is causing some drainage issues back upstream of Fox Lake.
Which again, in water situation, is going to affect your, your, your septic tank performance, is it not?
Yes, sir.
So, so if I'm here and you, as a one of the septic, we need that study to be...
Well, and it sounds like, you know, and again, I'm not believing this engineering firm, but it sounds like, you know, maybe we dropped the ball on that ditch, and there's not, you're right, there's not much we can do. You know, I don't know what kind of culpability is, but there may be some.
So if, if the ditch issue were fixed, and the flooding issue that we're hearing is there, were to be abated, would there be a problem then with the septic tanks in the neighborhood?
There would be on the south side.
Okay. I don't think so.
Right, right side.
Okay, as you go into the neighborhood?
Stormwater utility addressings, can you?
Yes, absolutely, hell.
Right, that's how we...
Okay.
Do we have anywhere in our, our budget, forgive me, we're not going to have a CIP for the next eight years, but we have anywhere in the budget where we are planning to run water into wastewater to that subdivision, already built things, for the $250,000?
You know what, Wayne, I don't, you need to sit on the front row from here on out. So Madison, every meeting, you come from the back row, and you come up every meeting.
I'm trying to say yes.
Yeah, okay.
Currently, no. This was one of the projects, if you remember when we did the bond issue, we put together a list of multiple projects because we knew we wanted to have more projects than we were going to have money, because once you got the bonds approved, if, if the project wasn't on that list, the council couldn't elect to do that project, you'd have to go bond up. This was one of those first drafts, along with several others that were listed, that the council at that time elected not... the council at that time elected not to include or fund under the bond issues. You know, so, that's the long answer. The short answer is, we don't have the funds right now to do it. Uh, we definitely in the CIP.
It's actually the one hundred and two thousand, seven hundred, five thousand, I think, to show that no fund exists.
Right. We're issuing as a project.
And how many houses total?
Twenty, twenty-three, twenty-five, twenty-five.
And can, can more houses be built in Fox?
I don't believe so.
There's one, one empty lot.
It's got twenty-five.
So, about ten thousand per house? You, you estimated two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to three hundred, so you're looking at ten thousand to twelve thousand feet per home?
Right.
And it's about the same to the home lot?
About the same to the home lot.
All right, is there any other creative solution? I mean, at some point, health department said, put a septic tank here, right? They said, it's good to go, put it here. Okay, well, that's, something is now changed.
Well, over time, septic tanks fail, and you have to replace them, rebuild them. Under state law, if the city, we cannot, if we went in and, if you elected the fund and we went in and put sewer in today, the city cannot require anyone to connect to that sewer that is owning an existing septic tank. What city sewer is within a hundred feet of the pump supply, the health department is not supposed to issue a permit to repair or replace a septic tank. So, it becomes the health department that mandates that they connect to city sewer if city sewer is there. One of the things that makes these so enormous, expensive, is when you go in after the fact, and you're, you know, in this case, we'd have to break and tear the street up, or one end, uh, we'd be tearing up every driveway, and then have to go back and resurface it. From history in there, and working on the water line, it's not simply a matter of going in there and repaving it, because we're going to have to put the sewer in the road one, and that means we're going to have to insulate and fill, and, because that was a county control, which was just no real base to it and impact on it. So, we would have to brain that street up, the wall specifications would be good.
One issue I'm, I'm major, uh, get most, uh, parts decided about in septic tank, when we're in the homes, uh, have sewer being part of the homes, and so you've got to find the way, you know, there's, there's sewer lines falling from, in the house from front to back, rather than back to front, so then you've got some potential issues of bringing that around and connecting to our sewer, where it could possibly be engineered, but it's in fact, you know, it's a.
So, so what is the, what's the solution? They have a solution, you got plenty, is the same as that.
The, the, the solution is, the problem is, it's, y'all just have to tell me how to fund it. I don't have funding available either from bond money, or slop money, or any other source. It's going to generate, at best, maybe nine dollars a month per household, you know, additional revenue.
You, you told them for it.
Yeah, so it, it's not.
Waste their, waste their.
It's not, it's not going to advertise a few.
Oh, there.
I've, I've got personally eight units in the city that's not on sewer, and once every, and some rainy season more often, uh, some seasons not, but on average, every three to five years, I get one pump system. I have eight myself.
And I, you know, I understand and sympathize with the residents, and would love to put sewer in there, but also, this body needs to be careful about the precedents you set. You know, we've got Oak Press subdivision, Marywood subdivision, Randall Grove subdivision, Brian Chase, Quail Run. We got multiple subdivisions that have been annexed into the city that are on city water and on septic tanks. So, you know.
I would love to ask the same request. One would be over a hundred thousand dollars a house.
Welcome to District One, Section Eight, and septic tank.
Well, and, and when you get into, when you get into a hundred thousand house, which we talked about that one before, I mean, it's not even, we can't, but you're talking, you're talking at ten thousand dollars, this body's going to spend ten thousand dollars a house to put water, to put sewage in front of their house.
Correct.
And, and to me, at that point, oh, as we get closer, and we look at that homeowner and go, you know, it, it's here, that's all we can do, that's at least going somewhere. Now, if that group says, we're not going, we're not going to tap on them, well, before we put it in, okay, but if they're willing to tap on it, they're willing to, maybe we figure out some way to contract it all together, and someone saves it all together.
We've got to design it all together, because historically, that is what the city has done in areas where the council didn't elect to go in and install sewer.
I, I, I guess I'm saying, I'm willing to prioritize two hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the next fiscal year, or, or next budget, to be able to, to do this. And that, and that prioritizes me, we got that.
The only thing I caution you about there, Councilman, is remember, if, if you do that, you are going to put a mandatory burden on the homeowners to spend that eight to ten thousand dollars to connect, because when their septic tank fails, if I've got sewer in the road in front of it, they're not.
They're going to have to go do it, so you, you take.
Absolutely. Well, that's, that's, you sign the paper, that's a roll of dice.
What's a typical replacement, just, let's just say, I mean, I realize it depends on the size of the house, how many people are present in it.
I think a normal septic tank, you're looking at around thirty-eight, hundred and five thousand dollars to put up, and that's put a whole system in.
But that, by, by, and replace it where the time and thus is going to cost.
Yeah, and in this case, you wouldn't be putting a whole system in. The tanks are still good, it's the drain fields, uh, you know, and they, again, you've got surface drainage that's, you know, adding to the problem. They could have to build raise beds, so, you know.
And, yeah, I own properties of old neighborhoods, and, and I know that at some point, one of the plumbers in the house will say, that orange burst pipe is gone, you're going to have to dig up, go to the meeting and park out, and you can fix it, it's only seven thousand dollars.
Correct.